We're about ready to begin. Have a lot on the itinerary. We're going to start with the pledge and then a prayer. Pledge led by Betsy and prayer by Susan. If you please stand. We have approval of minutes. A lot of these has to do with a summary of our budget hearings in August. And then we had a subsequent follow-up hearing on the 22nd, and we did get minutes, I think, on the 26th or shortly, on our regular August meeting on the 25th. And we had a special meeting on the 9th to take up and approve retirement sick pay for our chief deputy in the Sheriff's Department. His counsel had a chance to receive, read, and if there aren't any questions, we take a motion. And I would, I would take all the ones in August together unless you have questions, which we can talk about individually, and then September as a second motion.
Make a motion to approve all August meeting minutes?
It's been approved. Did I hear a second?
I seconded.
Peggy seconded. Susan approved. Any questions, comments, corrections? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Actually, say nay, not the same. Okay. Do I have a motion for the September 2nd special meeting that took up the retirement sick pay for Chief Deputy Sheriff?
I make a motion to accept that.
Moved by Peggy in second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Susan. Any discussion?
All abstained since I was unable to make the meeting.
Thank you, Chad, for doing so. If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. 4-0, because we only have five. Okay. I think we have Lisa Lee on Zoom. It looks like we have her name up there on Zoom. Can you hear us, Lisa?
I can, thank you.
Yes, and we have Lisa's from Ice Miller, who's a bond counselor from Indy that's helped us on previous bonds. And we have Jason Simler from Baker Tilly, who can also assist in answering questions. Jason gave us an update just moments ago. The previous update was from early August, I think, August 15th, I think. When Susan and I had a conference call with Emma, Lisa, Jason, and someone else from Lisa's office last Friday, we had several questions. Susan and I, after discussing this briefly at our last meeting, felt that the general feelings of the council was, number one, not to exceed our debt limit, which I think was $5.8 million approximately, and secondly, not have any effect on taxpayers, keep it tax neutral. Given that information that we shared with them, I feel like quickly looking over what Jason just handed out, that is what is included in this. So I'm going to open it up probably first to Lisa and any time that Jason wants to chime in. And any time a question arises among council members, you can chime in. So Lisa, what do you have to tell us as far as an update since we last spoke on Friday?
Yeah, for the council, I just, I first want to start with, there's a couple of different considerations here when you're looking at issuing GO bonds. One is your debt limit capacity, and based on Jason's updated numbers, that's a little over $5,976,000. The other consideration is a statutory one called a controlled project. And if a bond issue that is payable in whole or in part from a new tax levy, there's certain thresholds that if the project, the overall project, not just the bond issue size, not, not including grants, which would include your ARPA funds, but other funds of the county would count, there's a threshold for which the project might be subject to the petition and remonstrance situation. And that threshold right now is $5,815,224,000. The other is the referendum threshold, which is much higher, and it's not an issue here. The situation with Henry County is that both of these are fairly close together, which is not always the case. So really, the difference in your debt limit and being over the threshold for a controlled project is only $161,000 and change. So the issue with being a controlled project mainly for you guys at this point is it adds a lot of upfront approvals, additional public hearings. So you would have to have two preliminary determination hearings prior to ever being able to consider the bond ordinance. You still have your additional, yes, sir?
You're coming across over-modulating over here. I don't know if it's loud on our end. They're saying not. Maybe a little bit further away from your mic or computer. It's squelching.
Let me, let me turn my sound down here a little bit. I can do that. Give me just a second here.
We can hear you, but it's, it's.
I turned it up because I couldn't hear you guys as well. Okay.
Okay. That's better, I think.
Hopefully that is, hopefully that's better.
No, but go ahead.
Okay, I apologize. I can get a, get back away from you. So the difference, the problem with the controlled project for Henry County is it adds so many additional procedures that I'm not sure you could actually get through them by the end of the year. And since your goal is to keep your tax rate levy, you need to issue the GO by the end of the year in order to have that levy in place for 2023. So you're losing $161,000 in capacity of your GO bond, but you're gaining a much more streamlined approval process that we can go over here in, whenever you would like. But those are really the two concepts that I wanted to make sure the council understood and had an opportunity to ask questions about. And then from there, I can go through the procedures, or Jason can go through his numbers. But if he's already done that with you, then you don't, you may not need that.
You just summarized very well what we discussed last Friday, Susan and I, that we could go up to 5.9 something, but it would open ourselves up past the debt limit and/or open up to citizen remonstrance, which could conceivably delay this to the point we would not be able to get it in by the December deadline that we need in order to be tax neutral. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it comes down to the 5.815. That's on page two of Jason's handout, which I think was the number that was articulated last Friday on our, on our conference call. Counsel, counsel, questions for Lisa or Jason? One of the things that Susan and I asked was, at this point, we don't have to be specific as to what projects, but we, what would be the scenario come October? Because we have a meeting that's actually the third Thursday in October, which is the 20th. How much specificity would we need? You indicated not a whole lot today because the commissioner sent you the DLZ report, which gave you a pretty solid idea from a professional company that we have large needs, and we have a lot of funds left that's not been considered yet for this, but maybe a combination of the two. How specific do we need by the October meeting?
Well, as you mentioned, for today, for the additional appropriation ordinance[1260.92][1260.95]introduction, we're not asking you to adopt it today. We kept it broad as far as just capital improvements to county-owned property. When it comes to the bond ordinance, for tax purposes, we would prefer that you be a little more specific, at least as to can we name the buildings that might be improved or reconstructed or renovated, or, you know, what, what are the buildings at least that we're talking about? And let's name those in the bond ordinance. That would be helpful. You could, let's say you had three buildings that you felt like you could, you would have enough money for, but if, if bids actually came down a little bit in this next timeframe, which is probably not going to happen, but if they did, you could add a statement such as, and if funds are available, you know, this additional building could be renovated, improved, or this additional capital project could be funded with this bond ordinance. The legislature, when it comes to a new tax levy, they prefer a little more specificity, but we don't have to drill down into each building as to what you would do to each building. I mean, I would have to do that for tax purposes to understand the economic life of what you're doing and make sure that the term of the bonds does not really exceed that. But that is behind the curtain kind of thing for the IRS. It's not really the bond approval, the bond ordinance approval. So really just kind of understanding what buildings we're talking about and naming those so that the public understands which buildings you're improving with this general obligation bond. That, that would be where I would like to see the council come out.
And that, you would like that additional specificity, for example, list the three buildings of the DLZ study by our October council meeting on the 20th?
Yes, and I think that could be, it could be as little as capital improvements to the blank, blank, and blank county-owned buildings. And together with all appurtenances, equipment, necessary improvements, you know, kind of a very broad ending to that so that you're not, we're not very specific as to each building as to what you do. So if you get in there and you find you need to shift money from the one improvement that you were going to do to another one, you could do that without any kind of amendment or anything else.
Okay. Without additional information, questions from council members? I haven't heard from Jason yet either.
Not a question so much as a statement. I'm someone who likes to know exactly what I'm voting for before voting for it. So it all sounds reasonable, but I, I personally would love as much specificity as possible on where the GO is going to, you know, where the funds are going to go and how we improve buildings. And part of that's going to be on me to study up. But I would just ask on my own behalf that we, we really have as much information as possible.
I guess I would.
One thing I would, I apologize. One thing I want to caution on, and I think Joel could speak to this, if I'm reverberating and it's not easy to hear me, I think Joel could also talk about this. It's, it's, if you get too specific, which happened a few years ago in one of the general obligation bonds that the county did, you really limit yourself to any ability to move that money to a different project. As opposed to if you just talk about the buildings and you agree in your council meetings and in your finance meetings, what will be happening to those buildings, then that's more of an internal decision as you go, as opposed to having an exhibit A that really lists every project and everything in that project by number, by dollar amount. It's really hard to move that around. And there was some desire to, to make those movements in the past. So that's all I would caution.
Other questions? Chad, I think.
So yeah, what I was going to say is, I guess, since I was not on that call, I would like some, someone to give us a rundown of the thought pattern for scenario two that's on here with this $10 million lease revenue bond. I don't know if that's Jason, if Cannon or Susan that were on the call want to do that, but I just want to make sure I have some, some idea of what, what the thought pattern is there.
Mr. President, I'm happy to answer that. At the call, just kind of back up a little bit, just say, you know, this process is not new. We've done this two or three times is you have debt rolling off and you keep the tax rate at that level, right? So this is really very similar to what we've done in the past. So we did show kind of two scenarios. The first one is kind of what we've done in the past. If you turn to page two, the feasibility that I handed out, as was mentioned, we are looking at a $5,815,000 bond issue. If you decide to go forward to close this year to keep that tax rate in place. And so if you turn to page three, what we've done in the past is we've tried to get that bond paid off as quickly as possible while maintaining a neutral tax rate, so no impact to taxpayer. And so if we were to do that, based upon, you know, illustrative interest rates, that repayment would look similar to what's on page three, so about a four-year repayment period. And if you turn to page four, it shows that. And you have 2019 GO bonds that we issued a few years ago. The last payment is July of 2023, at the $126,000 payment left. You have the 2021 refunding bonds with the Justice Center. They mature in January 2024. So those bonds as well, their last payments will be next year. Wrapping in these illustrative bonds, if you decide to go forward, you can look at the far right, we're keeping that tax rate right at around 11 cents, which is what the debt service tax rate for both of those bonds were for this year, 11 cents. Now, as we were talking about on Friday, the county has become aware of potential new projects that no one has made a decision on, but there's potential projects that the county would like to potentially do in the future. That would be beyond the $5 million that we're talking about here. So if we, I wanted to kind of plan ahead, if it's something that the county may consider doing next year, I thought it would be important to structure these bonds so that you could issue a second series of bonds next year if the county decided to and not have a right impact on the second series of bonds. So that's what the scenario two is trying to accomplish.
Jason, was that additional, just because we discussed for the first time, the possibility of exploring a pod for the jail? Was that what you had in mind or something else I'm not?
The pod or the DLZ study, which, you know, if you looked at all four priorities, totaled around $11 million.
Yeah, well.
Not saying that you would want to do all four of those, all four priorities are all of them, but giving the flexibility to do more projects than the $5 million that this would do.
We, we were told yesterday the pod itself would be over $11 million. So we were far off on our wild estimates on Friday.
Well, and this, and this will show you that on page five, this looks at the bonds that we're talking about now, again, still the $5,815,000. But instead of paying it over four years, spreading it out over six or seven years. So now if you look at the far right, you know, it's 1.2 million payment for next year, and then it drops down to a million dollars for the next four or five years. And what that does is that gives you the flexibility to issue another bond. Doesn't have to be 10 million. I just use that as an illustration. Could be, you know, anything. I just put 10 million as an illustration on page six. And this is, you know, $10 million paid back over nine years. If you look at page seven, it shows that we could issue another $10 million bond next year, pay it back over nine years, and still not have an increase in your tax rate. And it gives us flexibility to start paying some of that principal off on that nine year, on that $10 million bond here in the next five years, instead of, you know, waiting for 10 years before we can pay any principal, like we've had to do for the food and beverage bond. So I'm trying to be able to get you to be able to pay as much principal on a second series if it's issued, so you're not just paying interest only. So you're not just paying interest only.
So if we follow this scenario, we would not issue another GO bond for nine years unless we wanted to raise the debt?
You would issue, under this scenario, you'd issue a?
After that, though?
Yes.
Okay.
If you were to issue another bond after the 10 million, then that would be a rate impact.
Right.
So let's say if you come next summer, you've looked at all your projects and you need more than 10 million. You need 15 million. Instead of doing a nine-year bond issue, we'd probably do 12 or 13 or 15-year bond issue and just keep that tax rate a little bit longer, if that was your desire. And we could go all the way up to 20 years, another 20-year bond issue if you wanted to.
And I think while we were still on the phone, we got an email or a text last Friday that maybe the pod wasn't as critical as we initially read into the first information that we needed to be aware of, that we need to start planning. So it gives us some flexibility, I think is what you're saying. And on page four, answer if I'm hearing what you said correctly. This is basically rolling in the 2019 bond and the Justice Center bond into these scenarios.
Correct.
To keep it tax neutral.
That's correct. Yeah, in this situation, you have two bonds rolling off at the same time. Where in the past, when we've done this, it's just been one bond. And that's why you were able to fund a much larger project than we've had in the past.
And since we started initially talking over a year ago about food and beverage interest rates, it's gone from, what, 2.5 to 4.25?
And maybe higher by the time we're done.
So don't tear any more than we have to because it's just going to continue to rise.
Yeah, you probably know the feds raised the rates earlier this week, depending on basis point.
When does the council need to pin down which scenario? Tonight, a special session that we might have between now and October? What's, I'm trying to understand how this ties into what Lisa's talking about.
Sure, I think Lisa had passed out a timetable. And based upon that timetable, we're looking at closing November 7. In order to meet that timetable, we would probably need to have parameters by October 17. So before your October 20 council meeting.
So we might need a workstation or a special meeting?
Now, if you do need more time, and we tried to close on the bonds as quickly as possible because interest rates are rising. So I wanted to try to get this as closed before they rise anymore. But if you need more time, we could definitely push this back.
So if moving it from October 17 to October 20, would that upset the whole timetable or?
No, that would, that would still work.
Okay, because that's three days. I didn't know if that was lockstep.
We can make that work.
Okay. Questions from council? So we do not have to decide which scenario tonight?
So I think if, when we do vote tonight, we are voting just to approve the ordinance from Lisa saying that we do want to pursue some type of bonding that won't impact the interest rate. And we're not, we haven't yet specified exactly what it will be for or the exact bonding scenario.
Yeah, that's correct. You're just approving kind of appropriation for the bond up to that $5,815,000.
And up to that, so it could be less if we chose to, it just couldn't be more without, okay.
And just one quick note, you're only introducing that ordinance this evening. We will have to have a notice and a public hearing on it at your October 20 meeting. So you're not locking yourself into anything at this point.
Okay. So it's on an itinerary, but I think, Joel, you said this is not really a hearing per se. Okay. Okay. Are there other questions for Lisa or Jason before? Should I read the entire ordinance?
I don't think you need to. I think we just know that this is 2022, 13, 35.
For that amount of money?
An appropriation ordinance for that amount of money. It's anticipated bond issue will be a public hearing on this particular ordinance and appropriation.
Okay. Before I do so, are there any other questions for Lisa or Jason? If not, this is ordinance number 22-13 that we're considering. An ordinance of Henry County, Indiana, appropriating the proceeds of the general obligation bonds, whereas a notice of public hearing on the appropriation of the proceeds of the bonds and an amount not to exceed $5,815,000 is to be issued for the purpose of procuring funds to be applied to the cost of construction projects and incidental expenses to be incurred by the connection therewith and with the issuance of sale of bonds was properly published, which proofs of publication presented to the council and placed in the county's records. Again, the amount is listed. And Section 2, the auditors hereby authorized and directed to report and certify additional appropriation to the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect. And after this passage, do I have a motion to approve ordinance number 22-13? Okay, very good. Okay, Jason drove here and Lisa is on Zoom. The other thing that we need to look at is the timetable, which I believe council's been given. It was updated today, and I think it was updated that says done. We've already done the September 19. Lisa, was there anything else that was updated since I sent this out last, over the weekend, I think, or Monday?
Yes, the only, the things that were updated, first of all, the beginning procedures with the introduction this evening of the additional appropriation, the notice of public hearing, the, on the additional appropriation, those all stayed the same. Your October 20 meeting stayed the same. What was changed is that, as Jason mentioned earlier, they were interested in trying to move up the pricing on the bonds and thus the closing on the bonds because of interest rates. So that was the discussion he had on the October 17 date. So the closing was moved up and the sale of the bonds was moved up from the earlier timetable. But as he mentioned, we can move that back. We can be very flexible with respect to the council's needs for all your determinations as to what you're going to do and how much you're going to fund.
Okay, and I think we'll be in communication with Jason and you as time gets closer. If we need a special meeting, that's not out of the question. If something occurs with the feds saying they're going to raise it half a percentage point or something, and we need to get this quicker. But the end goal is to have this all done by our December meeting, right? The closing, that's the ultimate goal, so it doesn't have, so it's tax neutral. Correct? Correct, okay. Do we need to make a motion to approve the timetable?
Not for my purposes, you do not.
Given the length of our agenda, is anybody opposed to carry it on? If not, we have on the itinerary the Baird Agreement. And Jason, this looks very familiar to what we did on the food and beverage. Could you come forward? And if the council has any questions, ask Jason because this almost looks like a template of what we saw several months ago, correct?
Yes, Baird is the underwriting firm that she used for the general revenue bonds a few months ago. They did a great job, got us a very competitive rate. Talked to them again, they were more than happy to help us with this bond issue as well. So it's just their agreement.
If I remember right, that was a favorable approach to use as far as expenses. The bond, the rate we got was more favorable going the Baird route than the traditional route we had gone.
It was probably very competitive, very close, but we didn't have to go through the rating process and incur some of the additional expenses.
Okay, so net savings somewhat, okay. Questions for Jason about the Baird? This sounds like something we might need to make a motion and approve. Do I have a motion to execute the Baird Agreement?
So moved.
Second. Who moved and seconded? Okay, in which order? Okay, thank you. Moved by Betsy, seconded by Chad. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Passes 5-0, thank you. Table, the report from Baker Tilly, the information from Lisa. Anything else since you came afar? And thank you for being on Zoom so many times over the past year. Send us your bill. And any other questions for them before we sign off? If not, thank you both so much for what you've helped us with over the years. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks. Thank you, Jason. It was good seeing you yesterday as well. Yes, I'm gonna, if there's time, I'm gonna mention that at the end. Thank you, you know, that was kind of nice. Okay, we have a lot of papers I'm shuffling here. We have a, actually, instead of EDC, you were going to forego the EDC because you two looked at our itinerary. You two have a ballgame to go to. Peggy has a ballgame to go to. I have a ballgame to go to, so carry on, wayward son. Resolution number 2022-09-22-006 has to do with Draper, if I remember correctly.
So in the audience is some representatives of Draper. We have Mr. Chris Broom, who is president of Draper. And might I add, the fifth generation owner of Draper, and then the CFO, Jerry Crone. And so if you have questions, they're happy to answer. And we appreciate their attendance here, but more importantly, their continued growth and investment in our community. So the resolution, preliminary resolution designating property as an economic revitalization area and improving real property and personal property tax abatement for Draper. So the investment in the third where, or in the second whereas is $8 million on the building. And the next whereas is $2 million in new equipment. And then there's a conversation about eight parcels located at and adjacent to the intersection of County Road 700 South or Mercer Avenue and Pearl Street in Spiceland Township, Henry County, Indiana. And then attached to the resolution are parcel numbers. And then there is a map. So we have, we have two things going on in the resolution. We have the abatement for the specific investment in the project. And then we have the statutory requirement to create an ERA, an economic revitalization area. What I have done with Joel's permission is I have made that ERA larger than the specific project. Just in case in the future, there's an expansion for Draper, we wouldn't necessarily have to go through the ERA creation process. So the ERA area is larger than the specific expansion. This resolution also, if it's adopted, it sets up a public hearing and a final vote at your October meeting. So without reading it word for word, that's what it accomplishes.
This is a, this is the same parcel that went before the planning commission?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And that's going to be taken up by the commissioners next week, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not getting the car before the horse. This is, and what he said about contacting our attorney, we're all straight and good legally? Okay. Questions from the council?
I would only comment, as the chair of the abatement committee, I met with Cory. We went through all the numbers. You know, Draper has been a phenomenal community apart, company, partner to this county for many, many years. And easily would be at the top of the best places to work list that any of us would make. So I strongly support this. I think it's a great idea. I'm thrilled they're continuing to grow in our community with their corporate headquarters right in Spiceland, Indiana, which is phenomenal. So we really appreciate what you guys have done, and I fully support this project.
Chad, Peggy, as part of that committee, did she have any involvement in this or?
He ended up meeting separately because of some schedule things, but I believe she also met with, so I don't want to speak for her, she can feel free to chime in.
She just nodded, yes, she concurred with what you said. And I think at least one of you gentlemen over here during the PC meeting where we pretty much echoed what Chad just said about excellent reputation, one of the best places to work in East Central Indiana, from what we've heard, paid very competitively, very good to the employees, and good for Henry County. So we thank you for that.
Just to echo that sentiment, it's kind of incredible that we have a five-generation company headquartered in Henry County that's still family-owned. That's a really cool legacy. And you guys are great community partners. I can't believe how many people I know who work at Draper and love it, most of them love it. It's a great community partner, so I'm really glad to see you guys expand. It's fun to vote for abatements for companies like yours.
And I think that most people love the organization they work for, it's probably universal. But we hear a higher percentage for Draper than the average, so.
So I make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Okay, a motion made by Chad, seconded by Betsy. Any questions? If not, would signify in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. And we're sincere with our accolades. Thank you. Wish you all the best with your expansion. You're welcome to leave. If you have other things to do or stay. Yeah, same with up here. We're kind of trying to hasten this if we can. Additional appropriations, okay, let me get everything in order here. It looks like the first one I have is a comment or request. Henry County RDC operating account 10,000 is expressed in a handout that Debbie gave us. The amount is 10,000. Commission's request an additional appropriation from RDC Fund 4124, a non-reverting fund, matching funds for the repair of a rail line that provides for the delivery of sand to Grady. Any questions? It has Cory, if you have any questions, contact Cory, he's here. Any questions or entertain a motion?
Just a quick comment that as the liaison to the RDC, this is something that we voted on in our meeting and was fully supported by the RDC and all the members. So I will make the motion that we approve this.
Moved by Chad.
Second.
Second by Susan. Any questions? Comments? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Passes 5-0. Thank you, Cory. Cheer them on wherever you're heading, I assume it has to do with the?
Go Titans.
I figured, Go Titans. I worked there once. Okay, next we have from the sheriff's office, we have an additional appropriation for vehicle maintenance on the account that's listed on your handout for $10,000 with funds received for the sale of used sheriff vehicles. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Betsy.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Passes 5-0. Then we have E911, request for an additional appropriation of $49,160.77 for AppCo Telecom implementation into computer software. On the line number given, from the other line number, non-reverting state fund. Any questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion. Butch is not here. Anyone from E911? Anybody know specific what $49,160 is about? That's a larger amount than the others that we typically, so I just wondered if anyone had any knowledge of this.
I was gonna say, is this, this is part of that telephone deal that we approved?
It's part of the telephone?
Pretty sure that was the software package for that.
Okay, and that sounds right. I just don't have that package.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Chad, seconded by Betsy. Any comments? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Passes 5-0. Now we have transfer of funds. First one is emergency management. If someone here, if there's questions. Requesting the reallocation of funds. Requesting the reallocation of funds, part-time line to emergency management 361 fan, fund. New line meeting and training, which I think was discussed in hearings. I'm requesting move 6,750 to the new line, part-time two, 2022. This will allow some much-needed improvements to the training center. Any comments, questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Susan?
Second.
Second by Betsy. Any comments? Tim's here, if there are any questions. Thank you for being here. We always appreciate department heads being here. And usually we have at least one to five. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Passes five zero. Thank you, Tim. We have from the Henry County survey, surveyor, transfer of funds from the count listed, $300 for motor vehicle supplies to travel and training, and $250 from office supplies to travel and training. They're both at the AIC. That may or may not have anything to do with this, but any comments or entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Second by Betsy. Any comments, questions, discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Passes five zero. From Kathy Eek, Public Defender's Office, an additional transfer of fund request. Transfer $1,000 from contractual services from the line listed to office supplies, the line listed. No one's here. And I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Betsy?
Second.
Second by Susan. Any question, comments, discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Passes five zero. Baker Tilly. This was something that I shared with the council. It was an email to Debbie responding to her. I suggested a breakdown of 2,062.07. Commissioner Palmer indicated that these items are not incurred nor authorized by the commissioners to be paid, which would leave the entire amount of 6,069.57, which we do not have in legal. The only place we could get that is probably out of reclassification. I will open this up for questions, comments, discussion.
How much do we budget for legal for the year?
$10,000. I know that Debbie gave us an update, and one of these many, 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 many. We're what, 63?
So it looks like we budgeted 10,000 and we have spent 1,800 from legal.
Is that because of this or other? Okay, so it's already been decided? Maybe. I didn't have that email, but maybe I did. Discussion. I don't remember doing that, but if she said I did, I did.
Will we also be incurring significant costs with the, should we choose to issue the geo bond? I mean, all the legal with that, is that going to impact us as well?
That will be a part of the bond.
Thanks.
Yes, that, that was a question I broached in. As soon as I pressed send, I realized that from the past, that was incorporated into the expenses. So the 5.8 million, we might actually have 5.2 net after all the expenses.
I think it's 5.6, but yeah, it's in that sheet. It'll show you the legal fees, but, but we're still incurring legal fees throughout the rest of the year.
Yeah.
As in, i.e. our attorney sitting in the meeting right here billing us billable hours.
It's free gratis from here on out because we have no, we have no balance. But I, if I overstep, tell me. I will, we will decide otherwise.
I think that, I mean, I'm okay with that choice if that was what happened. We need to probably do an additional or move other funds into our legal services. My understanding was that these Baker Tilly bills had always been paid from the commissioner's budget before. So this is something we weren't expecting to come from this line item. So we're not gonna have enough money.
And Bobby's coming up to the microphone. Her response was, that was before we put a separate line item in for legal services.
It was when, because in 2021, you did not have a legal budget. In 2022, you did. If you look at your budget, I've got it somewhere. You did not have a legal line in 2021.
We're aware, we just didn't appropriate enough.
But I do want everybody to understand, so when Joel sends us the bill, if it specifically says counsel and counsel only, that's the only thing that comes out of your legal. If he sends us a bill and it says commissioners, counsel combined, we pay it. We don't nitpick and go down and go, Joel, did you spend 20 minutes for commissioners and an hour and 15 minutes for the counsel? If it's joint, the commissioners have been paying all of those legal bills.
Okay.
Only if it's separate, does it come out of your fund.
Okay, just tell me when you're done and I'll comment. Okay. We would have appropriated more if we had known that this change was going to take place. We appropriated what had historically been out of the council. We would have appropriated the amount because we kind of knew what Baker Tilly had been historically over the years. We underappropriated not knowing this change was going to take place or that it was based on the fact that we added that to our budget.
But this is not legal. And this is Baker Tilly, where we pay Baker Tilly last year.
It was out of legal, and we have legal this year. And I think that was the argument that Bobby was making. Let it stand, or what are the wishes of the council? Because.
I can change that, Kenan.
Right.
We can change that, but you, I thought you told me to pay the rest of your legal and the rest of your classification.
I, I might have. I, I slept since then, but I know that since then, some of the council have had questions about that. And this would be the time to discuss those.
So it occurs to me that we budgeted more for the commissioner's legal line item because we thought it would be paid out of there. They obviously don't want that. To me, logically, it makes sense that we would lower that status and transfer it over to us so we can pay our bills.
Well, in one way, I think Bobby's argument would be, we just did that. We reduced it 25,000 at our last hearing. But I, I'm, I'm kind of blessed are the peacemakers. I'm not wanting to create a wedge, but I also am one person, and I would want to follow the dreaders of the majority of the council.
I, I don't disagree with you, Kenan, but it's all general fund monies. So at the end of the day, it's the same bucket. And the fact that the commissioner's legal fund has $130,000 budget, or balance at this point, and ours has zero, and we're gonna have to continue to pay our legal fees. And had we known the commissioners were not going to continue to pay the rest of those types of bills as they always have, we would have budgeted differently had we been told. Because when we figured the budget, we based the $10,000 solely on the cost of the attorney, not any of the ancillaries. So we would have shifted that money. It's, it's in the budget. It just ended up in the commissioner's budget instead of the council budget, in my opinion.
I think we need to just adjust it. The question is just how much? Do we want to move 10,000, 15,000? How much more do we expect to pay Baker Tilly for the rest of the year?
Well, it'll, it's adding up. I mean, the meter's running with the geo bond.
Yeah, but all those will fall back to the geo bond that.
That's true.
At a, at a bare minimum, I think we have to transfer the amount of this bill or something similar. That way, we're not going, because at the end of the year, we're going to have to do it anyway to, to pay the bill. Because much as Joel loves us, I don't think he's gonna work for free.
No, he's not gonna be free gratis. I would be, that was tongue-in-cheek. So you have a, a motion of an idea for a transfer or additional appropriation that we can take care of this today instead of waiting until December 31st? Chad?
I'll make a motion to transfer the, well, I guess it would have to be.
That's the difference.
A motion to reduce the legal and the commissioner's budget by the amount of the bill.
Can, can I, before you make that motion? Now, I'm only one. But I would be willing to pay this bill, but going forward, any phone calls, meetings, large communications with Baker Tilly, Ice Miller, we'd be notified that this is gonna take place. All of this happened without us knowing about it. We didn't incur the cost, but yet we were expected to pay for it. So I'm willing to pay it, but going forward, we need to be aware of what's coming up.
Well, that's fine. I don't think we're gonna notify you. We have a special meeting like we had last Friday, but.
I was in that special meeting last Friday.
What?
I was in that phone call last Friday.
Yeah. Is that the kind of notification you need? I, I think.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, a heads up. I know before, I know in times past, in years past, nobody called the attorney in any department that the commissioners paid the attorney's bill without approval from the commissioners.
Okay.
You know, we'll, we'll continue to pay it, but we're not gonna allow $20,000 just to be incurred willy-nilly.
Well, sure. I've notified you, I think, three times this year, so. I don't know who else has, but.
So I think my motion is to transfer the amount, to reduce the commissioner's budget by the amount of this bill. And to, that movie, money will come back to the general fund and create, and, and do an additional for that amount to our legal fund then.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, Bobby?
Yes, we can. Laurie Rogers, we have an email to approve, yes.
But Joel, you can't just turn, you can have Joel write an ordinance to reduce it, to, to make a transfer. But to do it tonight, you can't. Joel has to come up with an ordinance in order to do that. I mean, you can't just do it without an ordinance.
Okay.
Then I would make a motion to ask Joel to write an ordinance to that effect.
And the second to that, yes, I'll second motion. Okay, any discussion?
My only concern is, should we increase it slightly in the event that we need Baker Tilly for any reason beyond this throughout the next four months, three and a half months?
That was my thought as well. Do we go a little bit more than the 6,000 to make sure that we're covered and we don't have to do additional appropriations?
Okay, so.
Because I also think we cross some lines if we have to ask permission from the council to do our job.
Commissioners?
Commissioners, yeah, the council asking permission. I think that gets into a very sticky legal scenario that none of us want to be involved in.
I'm wanting, I'm wanting to work together.
Yeah.
It's been advertised as a wedge. I do not want to create any wedge. Well, thank you for your editorial. I, I don't want to create anymore. Yes, please.
I, I rescind my initial motion about the reduction of the commissioner's budget. And I will modify my second motion that Joel write an ordinance to reduce the commissioner's budget by 15,000 and then do an additional to our legal of 15,000.
And I will still second.
Okay. All in favor of rescinding the first motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Okay, that passes five zero, I think. And speaking of communication, if this had been communicated last August, we wouldn't be here today. We would have appropriated enough. Okay. Now, that having been said, before anybody else makes editorial comments, let's.
Yeah, we stopped the vote.
Yeah, we stopped the vote on the second motion about the ordinance creation.
Okay, go ahead.
I made a motion and Chad seconded.
Do you recall what that was?
To request that Joel draft an ordinance, reducing the commissioner's but, legal budget by 15,000 and doing additional to our legal budget of 15,000.
Okay, and we had a second, right? Chad, any discussion? If not, all in favor of that updated motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Passes five zero. Okay. We are looking at ordinance number 22-10, which is an ordinance, a resolution for appropriation and tax rates of the Special Solid Waste Management. Adopted $34,480. No adopted tax levy, no adopted tax rate. We just need a motion to approve, Joel? I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved by Betsy?
Second.
Seconded by Chad. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Passes five zero. We have an ordinance number 2022-11. This is an ordinance, a resolution for appropriation and tax rates of Newcastle Henry County Public Library. Winnie is here. Thank you for being here. If you have any questions about it, I will summarize it. There's an adopted budget of the rainy day of 120,000, general 2,487, 78,871, with an adopted tax levy of 1,678,836, with an adopted tax rate of .1271. General, I just mentioned debt service 1,343,000, which is an adopted tax levy of 821,359, for an adopted tax rate of .0622, for a total of 3,941,871. Adopted tax levy of 2,500,195, for an adopted total tax rate of 1.1893. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Chad?
Second.
Seconded by Peggy. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Passes five zero. We have an ordinance for resolution of appropriation of tax rates. This would be for Henry County. And I do not want to read all these. Joel advised.
You don't need to read all the rates. I think you can just note that this is the resolution for appropriation of rates. Read the number, and I just entertain a motion if anyone has discussion.
Okay. This ordinance, resolution for appropriations and tax rates, resolution number 2022-12, which is for Henry County. It's basically ours. That went through hearing in DLGF. The largest is adopted budget of 15,138,221, with an adopted tax levy for the general fund of 9,878,500, for an adopted tax rate of .8189. The total, when you add up the local income tax, highway, local, all the health, park, emergency, cumulative CCD, redevelopment is 25,365,602. Adopted tax levy 15,173,005. Adopted tax rate of 1.2578. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is that you, Betsy? Moved by Betsy?
Second.
Second by Susan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, saying? Passes five zero. Need help from probably Joel and Susan, since Kyle's not here. I've been forwarding to you information from Joel involving discussions back and forth between him and Kit Crane. to you information from Joel involving discussions back and forth between him and Kit Crane and Susan Lightfoot. Several people have been involved over the past two weeks, including Bobby Plummer, as the question of the Personnel Manual, page 20, came up. I think Chad has been involved in conversations. Kyle has been. Susan has been. I've been contacting Joel in the interim because it became a budgetary matter, part of our budget hearings for 2023 budget, as well as what we promised them in budget hearings in August. What Joel wrote yesterday to Kit Crane, where he responded that after conferring with his colleagues, he was in agreement was longevity pay, and there's question as to, it's called longevity pay in our Personnel Manual, and it's what Joel used as the term in the correspondence with Kit Crane and Judge Crane and Susan Lightfoot, that longevity pay for 2020 and 2021 be issued to the probation officers based upon the figures that Susan Lightfoot provided, which is on this spreadsheet. That's close. 6,400, 6,800, and then 7,400 for 2022, which doesn't come effect until November. Correct. And the grand total was, we talked about that earlier today, 21? Yeah.
Is this after you went back to talk to the judge? Okay.
Because at one time, we were talking 60,000. I think Chad estimated 100,000. So it's gone down, but it was unexpected. Yeah, it was unexpected, but he went and quoted legal cases and the fact that federal law was not broken. There was no intent. Actually, we were in good faith, saying, go ahead if you have the budget this year. Judge Crane's footnote to that was not from their budget, but from the general fund. Now, in a parallel discussion, we also talked, and I shared with Jeff Plaster yesterday in person, that did a straw poll of the council in budget hearings, and pretty much six out of seven indicated we wanted to save that 18,500, and that's rounded, for raises. That was my comment to him. He understood. He was happy to know that currently because it was going to have a major effect on them, because we're the second-largest contributor to the Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. This was going to be a jolt to them, but he did appreciate that we gave him advance notice of three and a half months. I guess in a way, I don't know if it's appropriate. We could say we've saved that out of the council's budget, and not quite a wash, but it's only 3,000 hit compared with what if we had approved it. My recollection is that we had said, was that taken out when you had your sit-down with Debbie? EIRPC was not in the council budget?
I didn't double-check, but it should have been removed. That was the consensus during budget session.
Okay.
Right?
That was the consensus during budget.
And that money was reallocated for raises.
Okay.
I guess.
Is that your recollection? EIRPC was taken out of the, okay.
I have a clarifying question.
Absolutely, go ahead.
If you can, please. We voted last month to approve this year's longevity and took care of all the paperwork to take care of that. So do we need to address the 22 longevity, or can we make a motion to approve the 20 and 21 out of reclassification? So we have to roll back our motion and vote last month? Okay.
To do so?
So just.
Do we need to do that as a one-step process, or can we do that? Or do we have to do it as two? Do we have to make any language in that to roll back our motion from last month? That was to move, because we made a motion last month to pay, to start paying longevity to probation out of a transfer from their current budget?
Do we have enough in reclassification to do that?
I'm pretty sure we do.
We do.
So, I mean, to kind of circle us back and make this easy, I'll make the motion that we pay 20 and 21 longevity to the probation department immediately out of the reclassification fund, and then at the next payable payroll that's possible for the auditor to do, and then pay the 2022 as everyone else would get paid out of the reclassification fund as well. Does that work, Joel?
Second.
It's been moved, what Chad said, and seconded by Susan. Any discussion? Debbie, did you get that long? Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of Chad's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
And I did look it up, Chad, and we have, Susan, whoever asked, we do have 29,000 balance as of today in reclassification. I might have taken out the amount we talked about for Baker Tilly, but that was the balance as of today. I have down DLZ report. We have two commissioners here. I attended the last meeting that they had on the DLZ report. Susan, go ahead. We didn't cross paths today. We did call once. So whatever you have in mind, I'll try to fill the gap. And we have Steve and Bobby here, if there's questions relating to the commissioners. We do know from earlier today that we don't have to have specificity, but they're both here and take advantage if we have questions, because whatever's decided, in whatever form, we have to come up with ways to fund it as a council. So go ahead, Susan.
Okay. Thanks, Kenan. I know it was my idea to go over this here, and my vision for it was pretty brief, but I just wanted to make sure that all the council members had picked up their packets, and then just to say that it covers the courthouse, the Masonic Lodge, and the Justice Center. And it was really interesting, if you turn to page, say, six, I know Betsy's looking at hers, and, oh, that's too hard to read. Okay, hold on, let me find a better example, because I did think it was interesting how they did. If you go to the courthouse, okay, so if you go to page 10, first they kind of take pictures of the courthouse and show some of the issues that they're finding. And if you keep flipping forward, they get eventually to this graph that I have to find. Sorry, this is kind of awkward. But I think it helps the next discussion, if I can actually find it. If anyone else can find the.
What are you looking for?
Like the grid that shows the different priorities. What was that? Yes, so page 30. It shows here which items are in red, which items are in yellow, which items are in green, and then it kind of shows how quickly they're going to come up into yellow or into red. And so this, I think, is helpful as we're talking about if we're going to pursue Scenario Two for the second bond. If we are, you know, how many of these priorities do we want to focus on? Are we going to try to get everything into green? How many years do we want to keep them in green before we focus more money on this? And that was really all I wanted to point out today, because I thought it was interesting, and then, you know, everyone can look at it themselves. But I think we need to just be intentional as we talk about it. How much work are we going to do now, recognizing that if we don't do all the priorities next year or the year after, we're going to have more items in red? And so it just needs to be intentional. And I think that's all I need to point out tonight. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. And the page 30 is, there's a similar graph in green, yellow, and red for each of the three buildings, the Justice Center and what they call the office building. A lot of times, we call them the Masonic Building. But what I wanted to point out was the actual numbers. They broke it down into Priority One, Twos, Threes, and Fours. And the commissioners were talking about a lot of things. But when you start constructing one thing, it's going to uncover something else that they did not see in their walk-around, invariably, especially when you're talking about old buildings. So page 40 has those priorities. Obviously, because the Justice is the newest building, it has the lowest cost projections on it. And so the amounts they project, there's a range, Priority One, Two, Three, and Four, and then a total at the bottom. Then if you go to page 67, it does the same for the Justice Center, and you'll see those amounts are quite a bit less, especially Priority Ones in the 150,000 range, which is a lot less than the courthouse, which of course is 1860, late 60s building. And then later on.
I said I wasn't going to say anything else, but while you find your next thing, Kenan, on page 89, it just shows the price tag for all buildings of all priorities. And so for those people who haven't actually had an opportunity to look at it all, just doing Priority One costs, which is basically just foundation work, is about $5 million. I mean, just work to keep the buildings from crumbling. And then if we did all four priorities, it's 10 or 11 million.
Right. And the office building or the Masonic Building, that same breakdown I alluded to is on page 87. And what Susan just pointed out is the grand total of all three buildings, the courthouse, the Justice Center, and the Masonic Building is on page 89, and you'll see about a $10 million to $11 million total. And the numbers we were talking about earlier with Baker Tilly and Ice Miller was more in the $5 million range. There is ARPA. Now all that has to be weighed into it.
It is really, excuse me, a fascinating report. I took time to look through it and astonished at how much has been, I don't blame anybody here, but it looks like previous elected officials played a lot of kick the can, and this is stuff that should have been repaired a long, long time ago, bringing the building up to ADA status and compliance.
And they did mention, because I tuned into that also, DLZ did mention that on historic buildings, you can get some waivers from the, some of the really costly ADA things. And that's not, my brother was handicapped, and he really appreciated when buildings and streets and cities had put some monies in ADA so he could actually maneuver where he wanted to go. But some of it is optional for historic buildings, and that's something that the commissioners are trying to weigh. Steve, last I heard last night, you were here to answer questions for the commissioners. Bobby's here as well. Are there plans to have workstations that would include any council members? So as we get to their October meeting, we'd have a better idea of which bond scenario to go with, because we might have a little better idea of what we're talking. And I know some of this hinges on ARP. And the last I'd looked at, ARP had like $5 million left because we'd still had some leftover from the first tranche. Go ahead.
I don't think anything's been set in stone yet, because until we know what money we're working with, it really doesn't matter what we decide. So basically, it comes down to you. The issue we have is, you can look at that report from now until the cows come home, and everything's based on today's prices, which we know how those are all fluctuating. That may not even cover it. Anybody's done any remodeling work on anything, especially something as old as these buildings are, that may even double in price before we get done, because you start fixing one thing, and you find there's something else. As far as just limiting, saying you're going to do just Priority One or Priority Two for now, which is not a bad idea. But if you're doing a Priority One and a Priority Four falls right in line with it while you're there, you're silly not to do it while you're doing the other one, because then you're actually going back, having to tear something else up to fix it again when you could have fixed it at the same time you did the other one. So this is going to be a kind of a comprehensive thing of how we go about it to get it done. The only thing that worries me is if we put it off and we don't do but just one or two things here and there, we're doing the same thing our predecessors have done. We Band-Aid, we kick the can down the road and let somebody else do it, and then it's going to cost us even more. So those are my only cautions and concerns. As far as having a council member involved, I really don't care. The thing that worries me, if we start hashing over decisions on what we're going to fix, what we're not going to fix, and you get 30 people trying to decide, nothing's going to get done. It's just like if you get too many cooks in the kitchen, you ruin the soup. So as far as input, welcome all the input y'all want to give.
I think that there's really two approaches, because a lot of, well, I'll just speak for myself. I'm hesitant to bless a certain amount of money without having input into how it's spent. I think that's my job as an elected official on the council, is that I would have direction over how money is spent. So I think that we can either work together, or you guys could present a proposal of how you plan to spend it and give it to us, and then we know when we vote. Right? So if you guys want to set the priorities yourself, and then we can vote on if we want, if we think that's a good use of our constituents' money, that's one approach. Or we could all sit down together and decide it together. But I know I won't vote for a $6 million bond if I'm not sure what it's going to be spent for. So we can talk about the cart circling the horse all day, but if we don't have enough council involvement, we run the risk of not issuing the bond.
Okay, let me ask you this. We had a bond for a new jail. We came in, a million dollars under budget, and all the decisions that were made, the money was set aside. The commissioners worked with just the people involved and got it done, and didn't have to have 100 people going back and forth on who was spending money for what. So I guess I'm questioning what the difference is between that and that. So I guess at this point, you don't trust me to decide whether to do a good job with the taxpayers' money.
So by that purpose, you should just sit here and vote for me every time, because I shouldn't have an opinion about anything?
No, you should have an opinion, and I welcome it. But I'm just saying, if we have to keep doing, it's the same thing you guys were talking about just a minute ago, about getting permission to go to Baker Tilly or from the commissioners to get a lawyer or whatever else. If we keep doing this, and Kenan's right, we're driving wedges, and we're going to become the most dysfunctional group we've ever seen if we keep doing it. And it needs to stop.
I think the big difference, for me at least, Steve, between this and the jail, the jail was a singular project with a singular focus and a singular building. This is a blank check that could be spent on whatever. And I think that's the difference. If, so let me just, please, if we were to say, and I can again only speak for me, because I'm one of seven up here, but if you were to come back and say, please afford us the $6 million to spend on projects only within this DLZ book, then I feel more comfortable about that than just, hey, give me $6 million, and I'll spend it the best way I think should be. Because then there's not a lot of direction. Do you understand my?
Okay, and I agree.
Difference, and so that's.
We're basing our, you have that book. We paid to have that book done, so we had an idea of what we needed to fix. So basically, everything we're going to approve to do or even think about doing is coming from that book. That's why you have it.
So you would be okay with the council limiting it to these DLZ projects?
Whatever DLZ, their projects.
Or let me, let's say, limiting it to just the courthouse, the Masonic Building, and the Justice Center only?
Right now, and that's what that money's for.
Or something to that. I just, I'm with Susan. It's very hard, and Betsy made the comment earlier, for us to vote, because while it's tax neutral, it's still tax dollars that we're taking, because we have the option to let it roll back, and then it just goes back to the taxpayer. So that's, we're not raising taxes, but we have the option to let it roll back, and we not do the bond, and then it goes back into the hands of the taxpayers. So it is taxpayer money. Absolutely, no question.
And we issued a GO bond a few years ago for building improvements, and we have deviated from that original list. And so I consider it my responsibility to have input into how taxpayer money. And so I consider it my responsibility to have input into how taxpayer money is spent. And I resent the implication that I have been difficult to work with while sitting in this seat, because I do not feel that I have.
I have not said you were difficult.
You just said I was driving a wedge.
No, I didn't say you. I said it is what is happening with all of us. We seem to be all testy, and at least looking at it from the outside, that's what I'm seeing is, and we all feel, you can sense it in the crowd when you're sitting here, and I want it to go away, because there's no reason for it. All I'm saying is, if I get a hundred people trying to decide whether we put a window in or not, and nobody wants to agree on what window we put in, then do we ever get the window fixed? That's my only concern. I said when I stood up here.
I think it's a straw man's argument to suggest that thirty people are going to fight about a window. That's obviously not our intention. We're talking about six million dollars of taxpayer money. I just want to see if I'm on the same page as the Commissioners. So I gave two suggestions, either involve us or give us a proposal for what you're thinking. And then I get to sit here and say, okay, I think that's a good idea, and I get to vote my one-seventh of the decision for how taxpayer money is spent. That's all I'm asking. I'm not going to fight about a window or the type of caulk we use around the door. That's not what I'm saying. I think that that should be understood. I'm talking high level. Do I agree with this plan? And then I can vote. And that's all I get to do in this seat. I get one vote.
It's certainly not for lack of trust. You mentioned lack of trust. I trust you inherently. It's, for me, it's just like they've said, and I already said earlier in the meeting, I have to know what I'm voting for. That's all. And I'm really grateful for this book, because it shows in excruciating detail how much work needs to be done, and it's going to be a lot of heavy lifting. And your point's well taken about too many cooks in the kitchen. I understand that, too. We want this to be effective and efficient. We want the best return on investment with the taxpayers' money. But like Susan said, we have to be involved in one way or another, just to understand, just to know what we're voting for. That's all.
And I think probably the maximum, there would never be a hundred. I think we're talking ten, possibly at a meeting. I was talking. I think we're talking about a, maybe a ten at most. And I've heard council members say in the past few weeks, I'm not going to approve anything if we have zero input in it, because we have to approve what these monies are going for. They said tonight, we just need, I mean, I think we felt, we feel left out that we have no decision. The lane we've been put on is basically a conestoga wagon, one-lane Oregon Trail. Like, you show up once a month to vote, and you have budget hearings. Everything else is Commissioners. You stay in your lane. I've heard it thirty times in 2022. Our lane has been so narrowed that we feel like we're not earning our money.
To answer your questions regarding DLZ, because we'll go after, since I was accused of having editorial, we'll just move on. That DLZ report is what we are looking at for the bond. That's it. No other projects, no other buildings, no other anything. DLZ, those things are the only thing that are being considered for bond. That's why we brought it. That's why we did it. It's not taking it to the jail. It's not taking it to the EMS building or the Hope Building or any other building. It's that, those projects and those projects alone. If you bond eleven million or choose not to bond anything, but that's all that that discussion is about, is this project, these projects. That's it.
It's good to know that that's the limit, where everything is limited. And for me, the next part would be, you know, am I bonding for five million or bonding for ten million? And what do those projects look like? I just want to know what I'm voting for. That's all.
My only concern is if we, and I realize it's money, and it's money we don't have. But my fear is if we don't do all of it, then the Threes and Fours become Ones and Twos very quickly. And that's where I worry that we're not, we're going to do just a little, and we're going to put a Band-Aid on it, and we're still going to have the same issues come up in a year from now or two years from now or.
And that's, in my opinion, where a work session would be helpful, because we have the option of issuing two bonds. And that offers additional funding. And seeing a timeline of how the work could get done over a series of several years would be helpful for me when I decide if I'm going to vote for the possible issuing of the second bond, which ties up taxpayer money for a longer period of time.
And we had great amount of input into the funding of that jail initially. We voted on the jail tax. We had very little input thereafter, but we knew we needed a jail, because that camp was kicked down the road for twenty years, and it cost us probably four times what it should have, if it had been done when the need was first arose.
I mean, I don't.
But to elaborate to Kenan's, we did not just vote for the tax. We went to multiple field trips. We saw the plans before time. We worked with the sheriff. We had a, and now it feels like, to continue what Kenan said, it's just, hey, vote us some money. Do your job, vote money, and we'll take care of it. That's not our job. We are to make sure that we spend the taxpayers' dollars appropriately, not just give you a blank check and say, hey, go spend it. And that's, because that is part of our job, is to ensure that they are spent appropriately, and that it's something that the taxpayers want, all hundred of them that are here tonight, but.
And I would agree, and I don't, I'm not discounting that at all, because I agree a hundred percent, and that, to me, is part of our job also. But we can only spend the money that you give us to spend.
I think, if I can summarize what my colleagues have said, I think we all want to work together. I think we all know that this, a lot of this has to get done, if not all of it, and it's needed to get done decades ago. But I think we just, we just want to be involved. We want to know what we're voting for.
We were very much involved in the jail process. We all went on visits. We went on visits to multiple jails. We went on visits to a regional jail in Northwest Indiana. I feel, and I know my colleagues have shared, we feel like your only job is to vote on the money. You have no input at all. It's not your job. Stay in your lane. That is the feeling of every council member in 2022.
So not driving a wedge, I mean, you can look at it, a highly functioning county government would have Commissioners and Council who work collaboratively. That's different than saying, just do what you're told without complaining, you know? So not driving a wedge is not just not complaining when you do what you're told, it's collaboratively working together, which is what we'd like to do. We'd like to collaboratively work with the Commissioners on this topic.
And when I first came up here, I said I would welcome input from you guys. I didn't say not to. So I think we were veering off again, because there is tension, and it's being spelled out here. But I don't have a problem with anybody working together.
Why haven't we had a work session?
We just got the report for you guys to look at. We don't know if we got money.
We've had the report for weeks, and we mentioned that it was critical to the timing of the bond, that we move forward on it. And there's still never been an invitation that I've seen, unless I've missed it in the last few days, for a work session. So, I mean, we're still under, we're under a timeline. We have to issue, we have to decide what goes in this bond by, I think, October seventeenth. I can't remember, October twentieth.
Okay, it doesn't, if I tell you we're going to do foundation work, and that's all we're going to do, and that's all the bond you approve, if you're going to approve a bond where we can do more, it doesn't do good for me to say, let's have a work session. This is all we're going to do. I needed to know what you guys are going to approve, so we had an idea of what all can we fix? Can we do just Priority Ones, just Priority Twos, Priority Ones and Twos, Priority Threes and Fours? What are, see, we don't know how much we can attack to get everything fixed until we know how much.
But we could sit down in a work session. We could talk about it.
I mentioned that twice. I mentioned it in the ARP meeting, and I mentioned at the meeting that I was asked to sit out there and was reneged. I was able to come up with four people in the room. I was asked to sit out there. So that was really inviting. And another Commissioner says, there's four people in the room. What are you doing sitting in the back? I wasn't really welcoming. But I said at that meeting, and I said at the ARP meeting, we would have four million in the bond easily if they chose to bond it, and there's at least four million left in the ARP, which we have very little say in, one vote. And I've mentioned how much money you have. You know how much money you have. Plus, you have money you have to spend by the end of this year in the 2019. That's one hundred percent up to you. So you have eight point five million. What more do you want? What more? You said you needed to know how much. If they vote, if they choose to vote, if they think they have a say, which right now most of them don't, eight point five million, what more do you need? Steve, I guess I want to, I want to say for me, you know, and I'm going to go back to the jail, because that's the most, I think that's an easy correlation. When we did the jail, the sheriff came in and said, I think we need this kind of pod, this kind of pod, this kind of pod. We figured out how much it was going to cost to do that together. We all ten sat around these tables here and interviewed together and voted who we thought would be the best builders together. And we did all that very collaboratively. And I have to say, I would put our jail construction project up against anybody's. I think it was a phenomenal thing from start to finish.
I would agree.
It came in under budget. We did something that none of our predecessors have been able to accomplish in over a decade. But think about how we did it, and think about how much things have changed since we did it that way. We don't have that collaboration there, and I think that's why we have this angst that you're alluding to. And I think if we can find a way to get back to that table, where we can all have an open discussion and everyone's opinions matter, not just one or two or three, everyone has a say-so, everyone has a stake. If we're all stakeholders, instead of just being told what our job is, I, and I know you're a smart guy, you understand what I'm saying, and I don't want to keep beating this horse, because I think it does none of us any good. But I am all for passing, again, I'm going to say I'm speaking for myself. I'm all for passing a bond. I have, I came in last week, I got this, I took it, I've studied it several hours. And some of it's scary, frankly, to when you really get down to the nuts and bolts of it, some of it's scary and needs to be addressed yesterday. Heck, needed to be addressed ten years ago, frankly.
You dropped the jail.
Yeah, exactly. So I am all for doing something on this. I just think we need to find a way to get that collaborative spirit back, so we can do it together.
It just sounds like, I think we're on the same page, and it sounds like maybe we need a work session. So we should get it on the calendar and sit down and start thinking about things.
I don't have a problem setting up a work session.
Any other discussion about DLZ before we move on? We would welcome a work session. You kind of hear the sentiment, and it's really the ball's in your court. One of the things that I wanted to cover, and Betsy just reminded me, it's a good segue. She made contact with Schaefer Leadership, Jeff Robinson. She talked to him. I talked to him. At my suggestion, I asked Jeff to extend an invite to Bobby. He gave several possible meeting dates next week. I'm open to most of them. He's awaiting her response. We do have money to pay for it out of reclassification, if it's chosen that be the way to do it. I think it's apparent from tonight, we would benefit from that kind of sit-down.
Kenan, can I describe a little bit about what we might be doing in that training?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and this is Schaefer Leadership Academy in Muncie, and they're very reputable. We've done trainings with them before. The gentleman who would be leading the training is Jeff Robinson, who works at Schaefer, but he's also the president of the Muncie City Council. So he's, he gets it. And essentially, we'd be looking at mastering group meetings, running meetings, how to handle distractions and disruptions, talking about roles and responsibilities for elected officials, and just having an open discussion about things that might come up along the way. It's base for conversation, and obviously, you know, it's been tense in this building for a few months, and that's really regrettable. I don't want to see, I don't want to see that get in the way of the work we should be doing for the taxpayers, and this is a professional development opportunity. And there's no limit on attendees. We can invite department heads, you know, employees. I would suggest that we might plan it around lunch and have some food here for folks. Jeff says that's a very good incentive system to get people to come. So that's, that's about it.
He spoke at an EDC meeting. It was very impressive with what he shared, and his audience was any organization, but most of the EDC are businesses. But he's spoken and worked with public and private entities before. I wanted to give, if I can indulge the council, a little bit of summary of AIC. One of the things that I attended that they reiterated, and I know I mentioned this a few weeks ago, is to get on and do the speed test for broadband. Henry County's still lagging by far, like Rush County. But the data that the FCC has is grossly inaccurate. And the speed test, the Farm Bureau, if you just Google Indiana Speed Test, it'll come up in the Farm Bureau. NACO had a work session that, they have one called Test It, that's a national one that they're feeding in at the national level to feed into the national, what they call bipartisan infrastructure bill. I guess we're getting a grant writer starting October. I heard that through the grapevine. The infrastructure bill was touched on and presented by a very articulate young lady from NACO. The grant writer could possibly tap some of these things if we have any say in that. Henry County should apply for the next round of Next Level broadband requests and grants through the state. A lot of monies was given out. And again, a grant writer is usually the person that would tap those and look in and investigate those. Dick Rogers was hired as a JCAP director to start in early October, again, I heard through the grapevine. He has visited Tisha Lindsey in Dearborn County, which probably has the model JCAP program in Indiana. One of the things I attended, the new nine eight eight national number on health care and addiction is online. The National Opioid Settlement, that may become a Commissioners matter as well. ARPA session generally reviewed what we already know. The council has a financial role. SUDS meeting I attended that we mentioned at the last meeting has been postponed until further notice. There's an ARA meeting on historic building grant with Eric Frye, one thirty next Tuesday. They've set up a Zoom, and a couple of you have, I think, have been invited on that. And that's, that came from Steve Dellinger, asking if that's something that we might be able to tap. They said they could probably help us with that, and a grant writer could help us with that. You mentioned Schaefer Leadership. I hope we can set that up. There's Rear Admiral Creasy talked about leadership, which was very good. There's a general station with Indiana Supreme Court Justice on mental health and addiction. The opioid has, the sheriff can talk about that, but the number of Narcan, they had a map that showed the number of Narcan administrations in the state, and it has just exploded in the last several years. One of the individuals was talking about the jails in Indiana, and our own sheriff has talked about how eighty-five to ninety percent are there because of SUDS, which is substance abuse diseases and mental health. With the JCAP program coming, that hopefully will address that. There are three statewide awards given, and only three given, and we received the local government cooperation award presented to Henry and Randolph Counties for sharing our county engineer and saving tens of thousands of dollars because of state reimbursement. Tom Saunders was highly recognized because he had been an active supporter in helping David Bardhoff and AIC, getting things passed, lobbying through the legislature. I posted on my campaign website his little skit, and it was quite funny. And I give him kudos for doing what he did, the old Sisters Act. I think it was with a gentleman from Tipton County. So a lot of the sessions I posted on my Kenan Gray for Henry County Council, that's not a plug, but that's where I posted it. One of the things I attended was the Indiana Bond Bank, which Newcastle has formed. That was informative. There was a cost-saving workshop that talked about gas insurance and something else, and I don't remember right offhand. But it was basically cost-saving initiatives for times of runaway inflation, and it was very good. And it was very good. And I'll post more and we have ballgames to go to. So anything else on the agenda? I would take a motion to adjourn if you are so inclined.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. October 20th at 3. The sign, Debbie?